Okay, I'm gonna call the Hicksville Village Council meeting to order. It is now six o'clock. All the councilmen are online. Wanna welcome everybody. We'll start with a prayer. I see Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect. Will you open the prayer place, Steve?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Let's pray. Lord, again, I thank you that these men and women are willing to serve you and we're willing to serve our community. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance to push us all forward. Lord, I pray that you give them clear minds to make good decisions according to your will and according to what's best for our village. Lord, we just thank you for all that you do. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Joining me in that, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
You got it.
There we go.
Yes.
Here.
Beverly. Beverly.
Here.
Clepper.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Yeah.
Juan.
Here.
Oh, and Mayor, Troy is not on.
Okay. We'll get along without any. You have before you the February 16th regular council meeting minutes for your approval. Any additions or corrections?
Nobody has anything. I make a motion to approve as written. I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Okay, you had before you the approval of bills. Have a chance to look them over. Any questions?
I had a quick question in regards to, and I know your guys are gearing up for like Day in the Park, but the rentals that are coming up from like Muttons and Taylor Rental blocking those prices in. Just in case something does happen this summer where we cannot hold the event, would we be able to get that money back?
Sorry.
Yes, I believe that we can. Worst case scenario, obviously, we're out of the money, but yes, I believe that we can get that money back.
That's good. I know you're trying to get things rolling with that already and it takes, you know, a good year or a year to get that handled.
Okay, any other questions on the bills? I will entertain a motion. Okay, so. Roll call.
I didn't hear the first and second.
I did not, but I will.
I didn't hear either one.
I'll second. Taylor seconded. I saw him raise his hand.
All right.
Roll call.
Mark?
I'm staying.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Okay, notice a public hearing, a last application, a meeting will be held March the 18th at 6:00 PM in the Zodiac Office, 108 North Main Street. That's just a notice. Boards in commission, the park board met March the 18th. And that was, I think you got, yes, you minutes? In your packet? Any questions on that?
Yeah, I do. I guess for the ball association coaches getting the background checks, is there a list of, I guess, guidelines to follow? Detailed, like what, I mean, there are lists for them to go through and, you know, how long ago does an old background check count? What type of background checks need be done? BCI, FBI? Number of coaches per team, who's paying for it, all that kind of stuff spelled out?
I've discussed it with Cheryl. Certain things. It depends on what the Little League wants to either have the town pay for it or if they pay for it.
So if there's a Little League team and they wanna have 10 coaches on the team, the village is gonna pay for all 10 to get background checked?
No.
There's gonna be guidelines like three per team or?
That's what we're gonna try to set up. That's the way it always has been, but in the last few years, it gets bigger and bigger.
Yeah, I know. And it'd be anyone that coaches inside the fenced-in area, the dugout, not the parents or fans, but the ones that are actually the coaches, the assistant coach, like bookkeeper?
Right. There should be three.
Okay.
But we're gonna get that straightened out too.
We tried this, it was either last year or two years ago, and everybody came to council and everybody was mad and everybody was gonna quit. You think it'll fly this time?
I do. I've talked to some of the board of the Little League and they sound like they agree with it.
If I can make a statement here, if we're going to do background checks for the baseball and the softball, then we need to do it also for all sports that go on in our park that is not ran through the school, including like the little, the mini aces football or whatever league that they have. I think that's the only other sports league that we have that's not through the school. I think anything not affiliated with the school should have a background check.
So I raised this question last time. We talked about this. And if we're, I guess we're starting down the path of requiring park usage, basically, to get background screens, where does it stop? Do pavilion rental, you know, does anybody renting the pavilion have to? Does anybody renting? I guess, where do we, where do we start? Where do we stop with that?
I think it should be sports. I mean, if somebody's renting the pavilion, it's a one-day event. Could something happen? Absolutely. But with the sports, I mean, we've got, you know, you're gonna be, these coaches are gonna be with these kids for multiple days, for multiple weeks. Pavilion rental, there's gonna be multiple people there. Day in the Park, there's gonna be multiple people there and it's just a one-day event. That, you know, I think we should just keep it with the sports, you know, and then like if a coach coaches baseball and coaches football, you know, the football comes after the baseball season. They should, you know, their background check from the baseball season should suffice for the football.
Didn't you say a last?
What about like the sand volleyball league? I know they have that. It's multiple, multiple weekends. There's not really a coach there, but there's people down there. So I guess, that's where, where do we start? Where do we stop, I guess? Is it adults interacting with minors? Is it, I guess, I think we need some clarification before we pass legislation on that.
Well, apparently it, Taylor, it's the adults that are in close contact with the kids.
But I guess that begs the question like Day in the Park, for instance, like adults with kids. I mean, I guess it's, I'm just asking questions playing devil's advocate here.
You got too big a devil in you. A one-day event, I don't even put that in the same category as, as a coach spending two or three months of the summer with little kids, teaching them how to play ball and different things like that where they're in close contact. Just my opinion.
Okay, any other?
Val?
Yeah?
What makes you think this is gonna fly this time when everybody was gonna quit the last time? Just because of the one certain guy that they wanted in the last time?
I think the price and that the village offered to pay and that they're gonna go through all the girls and boys, not just the little boys Little League.
You're saying that the village is going to pay?
Yes.
Because our, the notes that I had from your meeting says that required to get background checks and pay for them, coaches.
This is an offer to take to the park board, which has not even occurred yet. There isn't the situation where they were leery of giving out their personal information to the village, although they shouldn't because we have all the employees' information. Everything is secure, even online. My computer is totally secure. The background checks are $15. If you have the coaches do it and they want their background check to remain with them, they can pay for it. This is an offer that we can make. It's not anything set in stone. It's not a decision that's been made. It has to go to the park board, then it has to come back to you. So you just have to give them another, till they meet again.
That's another thing that I don't agree with. I don't agree with that.
There's nothing to agree to right now.
The park board should just make this decision and go with it and maybe tell us, but don't put us in charge of electing to make it, whether it's a law or not.
Number one, it's not a law. Number two, that's the way it is. Isn't it, Troy?
Well, I mean, it should be a park regulation. It should be part of the park regulations for any organized activities that's there. I mean, I guess they could pass whatever. The park board could. And then, I mean, the village always has the ultimate authority over it if they wanna do the opposite or whatever. I guess my problem is it doesn't make any sense to get background checks if they're not somehow passed on to the park board. I mean, how do we know, and I'm not, I'm playing devil's advocate like Taylor, but if somebody at the baseball association's in charge and they got one of their buddies that wants to be a coach and he's got something that's borderline and they just, nothing came through or whatever, I mean, there needs to be an accountability standpoint. So the way I've always done it is, and I've done it several times for different organizations to coach, is you fill out everything, you pay for it yourself, it gets sent directly to the organization. So in this case, like the park board, and then the park board would look at it and then I guess presumably if there was a problem, may have to address it with the association and/or, you know, council or me or somebody like that to see whether or not, you know, it's a disqualifying event. But when you got people policing themselves, you're just asking for, you know, you're just asking for somebody to bend the rules a little bit to help somebody out.
Okay.
That was, that was, that's what I was gonna bring up is who is, basically, who's the deciding factor on yes or no for the background checks?
Well, I think what you gotta do is you gotta, you gotta set a standard, basically, of certain things are automatic disqualifiers
that nobody can question, and then maybe there's some other things that you're concerned with. It's gotta be objective, though. You can't just, all of a sudden, if you say the park board's in charge and, you know, whoever wants to be a coach and, you know, they've burned some bridges or whatever and they're like, oh, we don't like him, we're just not gonna let him coach, even though he doesn't really have anything that bad. You need to be able to objectively point to something so that everybody knows what is, but I don't think, that should be, you know, in conjunction with the association or at least the park board should be able to have the, you know, a file of the information in case something, something goes down.
All right, I have a question. Where is the background check coming from if they're only paying $15?
From a coaches' association.
Where's it coming from?
It's from a coaches' association. I don't have it in front of me because I gave it to Val.
It's nice. It is called the National Alliance for Youth Sports.
Do we know how they obtain the information on these people?
No. I only found it today. We have to check into it. Somebody had to, so I got it started.
Well, okay, so this is my suggestion. If you're gonna, if you want the background checks, we need to do it the right way. And the only true right way to do it is if you want them, they need to be fingerprinted at the sheriff's office, electronically fingerprinted as BCI or FBI fingerprints, right? If you're an Ohio resident for more than five years, the only requirement would be the BCI check. If you have not lived in the state of Ohio for more than five years, then FBI and BCI needs to be done. Because, you know, not knowing, if they're only paying $15, my guess is these people are probably just researching the web and paying for some type of records check through the web. And I don't believe those are gonna be trustworthy. If you really want it done right, that's the only true way to do it.
Mark, it's probably something similar to what background checks like a lot of employers will do, where they sign up with some company and, you know, they can search records through like LexisNexis or something would be my guess, some type of database. I'll say the ones that I have done have all been through an organization like a coaching organization like that and it's been anywhere from $15 to $25 what they cost. And that's through a couple of the Little League sports here in defiance.
Has it been, you think it's been reliable?
I guess I don't know because I don't know. I haven't been a part of the organizations to where if it came back on anybody and they said, hey, you can't coach because we found out, whatever, you got this, you got this questionable thing on your background. The only time I've been involved in that and all happened in coaching at the Y and it just happened because I coached a couple of sports there with a couple of other police officers and we knew that one of the guys that was coaching one of the other teams shouldn't have been and basically brought it to the attention of the people at the Y and they just told him he couldn't coach, but.
Well, that's why I'm saying. Yeah, fingerprints are gonna go back years, so.
Right.
So that's my two cents.
So, so I guess you're working about, so you're talking probably eighth grade baseball down? Eighth grade, like Acme, junior Acme, Little League softball, Little League, the different, all the way down to T-ball?
Yeah. Junior high on down.
Okay. And park board's the ultimate decider, I guess, as far as regulations go, what goes and what doesn't go?
Sure.
Jared, how does the school, how does school, what is there like guidelines for the school?
If you're a prom advisor, a class advisor, a volunteer, anything at all, you have to have a BCI and FBI background check done. Once you get hired, I mean, it's pending, you pass both of those. If you fill out an application, you go to the school's website, it's under the district tab, employment. I think it's on, under both. I know it's under classified staff. The last page gives you a layout of every offense that if it shows up on your record that you will not be considered for the job opening and we can't hire you because you have that showed up on your record. And right below that, it also says something along the lines, or any felony, has a whole legal description of something else like a catch-all. But that's everyone, I mean, I gotta get my background check done every five years for bus driver, for the school. I've had, might have to, I have to pay out of my own pocket. I don't get reimbursed for it whatsoever. It's just one, and I know it would suck for a lot of the volunteer coaches, you know, I do get paid by the school. So I pay for my own background check to stay employed. They're volunteers, but I do know it's also, I think, $60 for the FBI background check. And it's not a $15, but you have to go in, you gotta get fingerprinted, for bus drivers, every staff member, whether you're employed, part-time, full-time, or a volunteer, you gotta get, you gotta go through the whole same process.
And that, and if you're associated with a school, that's by law. That's, that's not because the school was, is a law that you have to. So I fingerprint many of school employees, period. So, but anything that has to be, is associated with a school function, for sports or coaching, whatever it may be, has to be, that's, that's just a law. They have to do it that way. I'm thinking maybe we could go off of some of the guidelines from the school, you know, and kind of use some of those guidelines or use that as a baseline for these background checks for the, for the coaches as well. Okay, who should pay for this background check? What's your thoughts on that?
I thought, well, I've said this before, I always thought it was kind of the ball association's responsibility for doing that. That was my first instinct was that, I mean, those, those parents are donating a lot of time, putting a lot of time into all those practices and stuff and they don't get paid for it. I always thought the association could at least pay for their background check to get a free volunteer to work the whole summer.
Okay. I agree with that area. So they won't start practicing, what, maybe another three, four weeks? That's my guess.
Yes, I think so.
Junior high already started.
Really?
Yeah, they've been practicing at the school.
Oh, that's the schools, yeah.
But it's the junior high program.
Yeah, I'm talking about on school.
So we're gonna throw this back on the park board. Our thoughts are that they do need background checks. And that's what we've been saying for how many years? At least two. We just wanna see it follow through this year.
My thought real quick on this is I think the park board, I think we worked with this last year, I think they need to work with Troy to set guidelines of what is expected, what background checks need to be set standard-wise. And I know Cheryl's kind of at the ball rolling, but that's what Troy kind of has helped, helped us, guided us through these procedures. But if it gives them somebody to bounce ideas off and work with Troy in the setting those guidelines and then the ball association, everybody's on the same page then.
Okay. Any other comments? Are we opposed to the village paying for this? If we do end up going down the path that Cheryl had found at $15 a coach, are we opposed to the village paying for the, for those coaches? What's your thoughts?
If it's $15, I don't see why a coach would have a problem paying for it. I mean, I think it's on the coaches. They wanna coach. If they wanna volunteer and be a part of it, I think it's on them. And any softball, baseball, if there was a, you know, we had a lunch program years ago at the park pavilion where we fed kids in the summertime. Those people, I assume, would have to have background checks. I think it would have to be on them.
I think those people were teachers, Mike, as I remember, so they probably already had background checks through the school at the lunch program.
Corey, what would you guess? How many coaches, even just in like the boys' side, between Little League, Pee-wee, and T-ball? I mean, you're probably talking almost 40, 40 people there, right?
You know, honestly, I can answer that. I, that's why I'm saying, you know, three coaches maximum for a team. I have no idea how many teams there are. I know that I have seen teams in the past where they've had five or six coaches, which is crazy.
There's probably around 40 or
More than 40.
More.
Okay.
Not counting the girl's side.
So you're talking probably 80, so 80, 80 or 90, between probably like 80 people? Give or take. If you can get it for 1,000, that's $1,200. I think, I mean, we're, it's March, so we're a little late to throw that at everybody. I mean, can we find 1,200 bucks to add to the park board's budget? To handle it this year and then make sure that it's in the park board's budget for next year, whatever that dollar amount is?
Well, we waived a fee of $800 every year for them for the next five years, didn't we?
Yep. I thought it was three.
No, correct. We waived the rental fee for the, for the field usage.
The field usage. Right, and you're saving money that way, correct?
Yes.
Well, my question is like, does each, does the T-ball have their own organization? Or do they fall under the umbrella of the Little League Ball Association? So, like, like the Acme, for instance, like they don't necessarily have an organization to pay out of, though, right?
I think T-ball, they're all part of the baseball association.
Yeah.
I don't.
The Pee-wee and T-ball are part of the Little League.
Okay.
Okay. Junior high and Acme, they go around and get a lot of sponsorships. A lot of people donate money, a lot of businesses donate money to them.
I know if I had a child or a grandchild playing, I would appreciate that coaches had a background check this day and age. So we're gonna put it back on the park board to get with Troy guidelines and then I, I'm not sure about who should pay for it.
Well, how about they, they put everything together, including how they wanna pay for and everything, have everything together and done so that we know exactly what they wanna do and present it to us. And at that time, we can say, okay, we're good with everything except this, this, or this. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I think, well, we probably need to make sure that's all done before the next council meeting, I would assume.
Yes.
I was just gonna say, you had a year to get this figured out. That's my first comment. And here we are, two weeks before ball season. But back to the number of coaches on a team, the work paying for it was to keep, obviously, I got a team, which I don't. But if I want 10 coaches, you know, you gotta put a cap on, like, three?
Absolutely.
Or you'll have that abuse, well, I need six assistant coaches. What else? Do you wanna pick, you know, you're gonna have to cap that unless you could, what people, every parent can be an assistant coach and get paid. Beyond that, I guess I don't care what you do.
I think, I think three coaches is plenty. You got a head coach, assistant, and then somebody to keep book.
I agree with you, Corey. I guess my thing is that if the park board can meet, have a special meeting ahead of time, otherwise they're not scheduled to meet again until I think March 17th. And our next council meeting is March 15th, so unless they would give them time and have it at the first one in April, but they've already, they would already start practices by that time.
Yeah, I wanted to have it done this month.
Are you guys able to have a special meeting, Val?
I probably could try to arrange it.
Okay, I think we've got it discussed enough, so we'll move on.
I wanted to ask approval of hiring the lifeguards.
I didn't hear what you said, Val.
I wanna ask approval for hiring a lifeguard. Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Check.
Okay, I got three of them and I need your approval of them. The first one is yeah. Alexandra Kenner, Alexandra Kenner, McKeegan Bailey, and Olivia Clark. They would have to go through certification and pass that before legally being able to be a lifeguard. And I need your approval.
Okay, I'll recommend those three new lifeguards, Olivia, McKeegan, Alexandra?
Yes.
Okay, I'll recommend, I talked to Val a little bit today about them. But I'll recommend those three new ones.
I recommend the mayor's recommendation.
Roll call.
Who was the second?
Art.
Okay. Beverly?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway? Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly, uh, Carter?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes. Yes, I'll be glad when we're in person again. And I'm gonna recommend a new park board member, his name's Adam Gubernath. Um, I called and talked to him, I think he would be a great addition, so I'll recommend Adam for the park board. Any questions on that?
What's his last name?
Gubernath.
Okay.
I may be killing it, but
I think I know him.
He's a radio personality.
Yep.
All right, I talked to him in five, ten minutes, and he lives there in town, of course, and, um, lives there behind the funeral, and that addition there. So, I recommend him, did we vote on that? Our, our first or our second?
I'll make the motion for the mayor's recommendation.
Second? That was Corey, okay? Did you get that, Cheryl?
I did.
Roll call.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Clapper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is council committee reports, uh, my beginning meetings were scheduled, unless somebody has something to report.
I may, uh, say, Mayor, um, water sewer committee, we had, uh, Mike and Kent and Troy drafted up the second letter that was going to be submitted to the back row of Haver Drive for, uh, easement issues or objects within the back easements. Um, that letter has been drafted, we have to set a date, a timeline when, um, we're at our last dead, drop dead deadline for removal of those objects. Um, we're setting up a committee meeting next week, I believe, maybe on a Wednesday, uh, to do a walkthrough out there, we'd like to meet out there and just kind of walk through the property, talk about the soil. Um, the obstructions within the easement, make sure the, uh, boundary stakes or the survey stakes are still out there within that area. Hopefully, it's not too muddy, um, Mike was gonna go out and check it out first. Uh, we're gonna meet, uh, out there and then also in the office, discuss, uh, some things, but I have to get with everybody, get to, to do final preparation for that.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
Yeah, Mike?
Yes.
Ron Beverly, you wanna, do you wanna get, uh, some kind of an idea from counsel what they're thinking we should allow as far as time? I know me and you discussed it briefly, but kind of get an idea of what the rest of the guys are thinking.
Right, I know we talked, and I talked to Taylor after I talked to you today, uh, all three of us on the committee. Um, we're all thinking, you know, the end of, uh, April here, that gives them two months, as long as we get the letter out in a timely manner here. Mike Bailey had a concern, I talked to him also, um, if the ground is really, really wet, and some of these people have to get some heavier equipment to their back property to remove some of the structures or trees or whatever, I think we can give them a little leeway as long as they work with us one-on-one. Now, if we get to that point and they say they can't do it, um, you know, that's on them, but, um, we're thinking two months out from now and, and be, be the deadline. I don't know if anybody else has a thought, but, but if there is an issue, though, with maybe heavy equipment, uh, being too soft, then they would have to get with, uh, Mike ahead of time and, and, and work with him on, on when it could be done, as long as they're upfront with everything. Anybody have comments on that?
Anybody have anything?
No other questions from Mike?
Right.
Okay, any other committee? Kent, you're up.
Uh, one new item to get out of the way first, uh, since I've got Scott on there too. Uh, and if we could use their ladder truck, we're gonna take one of our guys up, we need to take a look at the big flag pole. Uh, we think the pulley system shot, but we need to get up there high to see. So, if that's the case, we might not have some flags up there for a while, just, you know, so people don't think we're anti-patriotic or something, but, uh, we think there's something goofy going on up there, so yeah, if we have to take the pulley system down and get something new, it might take a little bit before we get flagged back up. So, Scott, if you give me, give me a time, so I can let them know Wednesday, what time to meet you over there, or whoever's got a ladder truck.
Kent, I'll be around Wednesday morning, I'll get with you when I figure out what time I'll be able to be on.
Okay, um, I guess we'll just do an order of the different projects, if people have questions. And when we get to the second and third page, my health discussion items, but if you got any questions about any of the current projects from the funding applications or whatever.
You're doing a great job, Kent.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but things are moving along. Um, I, I guess one thing, since, not least, fire, since water sewer might be meeting anyway. If you wanna come up with some dates for that even that I can share with the utility, if you wanna go do that all year together. You know, you know, like people just accept whatever, if you ever wanna jot that down, then I'll make contact with you. Uh, if there's no questions on progress, we'll just need to get it up front, uh, we did an interview for the sewer physician. Um, I know also that he's recommend, um, he's our local boy, he's living over on West Stocker Street right now. Um, his dad's broke down.
He's making all the noise.
Yeah. Everybody will unmute, unmute, until you wanna talk, and then you're gonna turn it on, that would help.
Anyway, you kept about recommending Lucas Brown.
Okay. Um, I'll recommend that Kent hires Lucas Brown for the sewage, um, treatment plant, hell, down there.
Yeah, and it would be subject to the physical of the drug test. And I told everybody up front what they're gonna make per hour, he's starting out at the grade, seven odd range, which is thirteen twenty. And I said, he's, he's probation and some of that, he was okay with that.
Okay, I'll recommend down there.
I will, uh, make a motion for the mayor's recommendation to hire Lucas Brown for the sanitary job.
Okay, second. Roll call.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes. Okay, is that all you have, Kent? Anything else you wanna discuss?
Yeah, I guess just for the public, the recycle lot did open back up today. Uh, you know, if anybody's getting questions about the overtime for snow cleanup, I said a couple people asked me what that runs is, so this is what it's caught so far this winter. Hopefully, we're done. And then I didn't know how much discussing you're out here on any of the roofs on these buildings, I don't have repair estimates yet. Um, I mean, I know you kind of gave me a rough idea for our building. I, it's something a committee or whoever's gonna need to think about what they wanna do, you know, stretch things out for another year, or do the patches, or whatever, so. You just thought City Hall and our building especially, any kind of patch is gonna be iffy, you might be able to get by a little bit with the roof. Uh, thinking back
One of those lifetime compliment roofs?
No, I think it's that ten-year warranties. I don't think they're a lifetime.
But it, but it, but it is a rubber roof, isn't it?
Yeah, both of them are.
Yeah. What committee is that going to?
I figured it's part of the property.
Okay.
But this also goes back, what, three years ago, Mark, even before you're buying the PD roof. Uh, I know we've done some patching right before I retired. And I, I think we've done, I guess, a little patching on one corner since I've been back, I was almost thinking that roof's showing its age too, so Mike just wanna talk about roofs in general and go from there.
Let's tear them all down and build a new one.
Well, I wouldn't have buried that stuff, so, and I didn't keep the roof three years ago, but anyway.
Who agreed with me?
Taylor.
All right, Taylor.
Mike Barr. Larry too, but use COVID money.
Hey, I'm, I don't care whose money we use, as long as we put up a new building, so, and get rid of all the three or four or five that we've got sitting around. Uh, putting roofs on and maintaining and paying taxes on and heating and everything else. Long overdue.
Well, you guys can arm up with Cheryl over money and beyond that. And that would
I think, obviously, I'm not on the property committee, but I think it's something we really do need to start considering or talking about, kind of the long-term plan for village, for the village offices.
Oh, definitely. We've talked about it for twenty years that I know of.
Is that all you have, Kent?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Kent? Okay, uh, so, Troy, you're up, solicitor report.
Uh, first thing I have is ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero four, first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations. Ordinance, uh, looks like it's just for repo- uh, deposits that had to be refunded, and it looks like Cheryl would like that to be an emergency if possible.
Okay. I moved this on the roll. Second?
I'll second.
Taylor, second, uh, roll call.
Barr?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Then
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Second, third readings of ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero four by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
So, move, Art.
I'll second.
I got, uh, Larry, I think, second, right? Okay, roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes.
So then the next thing is resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero two, uh, by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to approve the joint solid waste management plan update for the joint solid waste management district of Defiance Fulton, Paulding, and Williams County. This is something that they do somewhat regularly, um, I don't think it's an emergency, but unless somebody has some questions, that probably might be something we could suspend the rules and move things along on.
I haven't got a chance, one hundred and fourteen pages yet.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Roll call.
Barr?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clapper?
Then second, third readings of res- resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero two, uh, by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to approve the joint solid waste management plan update for the joint solid waste management district of Defiance Fulton, Paulding, and Williams County. It's a move.
Second.
That Mike Barr?
There's now, true.
On Black Hand, Mike Barr?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridg- Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes.
And that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, um, how close are we to, on the LeBar Drive to get that up ready for bedding?
Well, I mean, I can do the, I was waiting to get the word that we were ready to go ahead, I could do the, the resolution at any time and then set it, I just wanted to make sure that we were all set on, you know, the guidelines and parameters of how we were gonna do it. I know you and I have exchanged a couple of emails, I don't know if you got mine from earlier today.
Yes, yes.
I sent you one, Mayor, earlier today about a question you had asked me, um, that I did some research on, but, um, yeah, I mean, I mean, I the, the, the resolution or to go ahead and sell it's not the problem, it's working out all the details, and I know the last time we talked about it, there was a lot of different opinions on how it should be sold, uh, potential reserves, how it should be marketed, when it's sold and everything, so I think, you know, and I, I'm not sure um, who needs to drive, you know, drive that ship and get that process going, but, uh, um, the, doing the actual legislation that it's no longer needed and to be sold at public auction, I, I could bring that at the next meeting, then if it's a matter of getting the details worked out and scheduling, uh, everything and making sure we got all our ducks in a row.
Okay, what's council's thoughts on that? Keep moving on it?
We need to keep pushing on it, but we're, we're not, we're not anywhere ready for, for legislation, I don't think. There's still a lot of detail
I don't think so either.
A lot of details can be, um, I guess, more than that, we, but we've discussed a lot of different avenues, but we haven't agreed on anything.
So, I'm trying to think what committee should spearhead this, maybe street light, would that be maybe?
You know, and I don't know if you folks are comfortable with it, but we need to, uh, wh- wh- what I think would be ideal is if we had an executive meeting over this, executive session in our chambers, so that we're all standing there looking at each other and discuss this, figure out how we wanna do it, when we're gonna do it. Get everything hashed out right then and there.
Okay.
But it's gotta be hush-hush, because we can't let anybody know what our reserve stuff are gonna be, it can't get out.
Yeah, I'm hoping the next meeting will be in the chambers, 'cause this is hard, very hard.
Yes.
I agree with that, I think we should.
Just have to, uh, keep, if we have to, we'll meet in the fire hall if we need the space, but I'm, I'm ready.
But can we plan on, on having a, a, will, will that be too far away, Mayor, to wait until then to, to have an executive and, 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 uh?
That's fine.
Okay.
Just so we keep moving. I didn't want it just to go, go out here. Okay. So the next meeting, we either have in the council chambers or the fire hall. So we can spread out.
Sounds great.
Okay. I guess that's official. Okay, anything else for Troy? Any questions for Troy? Okay, Mark, you chief, you're up.
I have nothing unless you all have some questions.
I have, I have a question or, or a piece of advice or something for you and Kent. Why don't we get a bunch of those big concrete blocks and go down there on Spencerville Street and line that corner? Because we're not stopping them trucks. And I went through there yesterday or the day before, and I see where somebody had a truck there up into the yard. On the side of the sidewalk. He was that far up into that yard.
Yeah, he was, uh, he was buried and had to be towed out of there. And he got a ticket.
We need to put concrete blocks around that thing, uh. Because the villains is gonna, who's, that's who's gonna pay to go down there and fix it all. Uh, and it's in, the more trucks that are going around there, they're telling their buddies, oh, yeah, oh, you can get through there. It's not a problem. We need to stop it. And, and I can't, uh, I can't point a finger at you, Mark, going, well, why don't you have officers there? I know you got more to do than just watch for trucks. So we need to just build our own little wall there. Now I sound like Trump, all right? We need to build a little wall there and stop these trucks from, from disrooting that corner to death.
Well, aren't they starting this week? They won't be able to go down it anyhow, won't they?
Well, if, if he gets, he'll be on the corner for a while and, and, you know, uh, truckers aren't really that sharp. I'm, I'm ashamed to hold a CDL, but they'll wait till they get around that corner and halfway down the street before they decide they gotta back out. How's Scott?
Any other thoughts on that?
You probably wanna be dying to admit the law. What you gotta do with them on the subject, Darren? I like the highway motor, there's just somebody to go pick them up. You still gotta touch the, uh.
I, I can't hear anything he's saying.
Do you really need to shut down?
How else are you gonna? Big rocks there that they just drive over.
Well, it's kind of late now, isn't it? So sorry to pull you off. I mean, how much you wanna spend down there?
Well, so they're shutting down Chicago here soon, right?
Yes, presumably tomorrow.
So that should eliminate that issue, Ron.
Chicago, Chicago Avenue was shut down today and Arthur Street today.
So hopefully that should alleviate a lot of that traffic.
Here, here's what you need to do. All the roads just seem to be barricaded off, plain and simple. The signs are not well-marked. That's part of the problem.
Leave enough, enough opening to get the, the, the people that live there down there. And that's all that, that a, a truck driver needs. It's just a little hole and he'll enlarge it.
Well, I understand that, but I would put two barricades across each side of the road and just leave enough for car only. Because I, I tell you what, we got cars that are disobeying those signs and driving down. I sat and watched a ton of them today from Jim Schmidt Ford coming down Arthur Street. Yep. And there's a road closed sign in the middle of the road.
You still have a lot of room for the dump trucks.
When people get out and move vehicles, they've done that on their own jobs, so.
I don't know. I just thought it was a wonderful idea.
I don't disagree with that.
I had a quick question. Uh, this probably to the chief. If you find me, if I don't live on that street and I use that as a cut through, I'm on High Street. I'm shooting all the way through, 'cause I don't wanna go around the block. Can you ticket me for that? If you watch me go all the way and do not stop anywhere, I don't go to Schmidt's, I don't go into a house, but I just go from.
You can?
Right. Y- yes, I can, but the thing of it is, those signs doesn't say local traffic only. It says road closed. So that means anybody goes around that technically. Am I right, Troy?
Yep. It says closed, it says closed.
Right. It doesn't have a sign that says no local traffic. And without that sign. But that's the, that's the way, that's why I'm saying, it is not marked properly.
Can you get on?
Can you, can you navigate with the stores, with, with the dealerships there, to, to shut down traffic both ways? That's essentially what you'd have to do, right?
Repeat that, Taylor.
You have to, it shows if you're, if you're putting through road closed signs on both ends, then you're, then you're cutting off the Ford store.
Absolutely. Yeah, exactly. That's why it needs, that's why the signs, along with it, needs to be, say, local traffic only.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. The, the signs are not properly marked. You know, it's just like the, the road closed signs. All right, the, you've got a no-through-truck sign at Case Fair and Steer Out Two. After that, you don't have anything until you get up on top of Chicago Avenue where it says no through trucks.
Kent, do you think you could have a little discussion with Nick Holmbrink? Oh, Kent.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Okay.
I've been thought back from this project, everybody was happy with the signs they had. And ever since, I keep hearing, no, it's not the right sign, it's not the right sign.
I, I've said all alone from the day one that we had the meeting in the council room, what signs need to be put up? And nobody has done it.
Well, we're stopping the trucks coming from Case Fair into town.
I can't, because that's out in the county. That is a county, that's not a village. I don't have jurisdiction out there.
The road closed sign in Case Fair is sitting in Fort Worth Towers driveway. That's where the road closed sign is.
Right, and all it says is, and all it says is road closed.
Correct.
Okay, so the truck.
That means every car that comes through there is in violation, just like the trucks.
Yep.
Okay, let's back up. The truck yesterday on Chicago Avenue. Now, I didn't see it, but many people did. He came, evidently off of a mean zigzagged, uh, corridor and tried to get onto Chicago.
Right, because. Did he get stopped?
He's not what they have called a truck for, 'cause they don't know anything. What'd he get cited for?
Disobeying a traffic control device. He's disobeyed the traffic control device that's sitting at High and Main where it says detour route, no through trucks. And he went through it and then he come down, cut around it instead of following detour route.
Okay, so I did like to put local traffic only on every fair trade he's got. And we'll start naming people, let, right? We haven't asked him.
Yes.
Not yet.
'Cause my guy, yes, it's, those signs have to be, you gotta give them, they gotta be marked and fair warning, it can't be when they get up on top of something. So at the road closed sign out FWT, it, it needs to say no through trucks, local traffic only. Right? At High.
That was gotta go through trucks, but that's our sign.
That's at the. Okay, that's on the sign at Case Fair Miller and Two. No through trucks.
Yep. So why would these trucks get the stop?
That sign sits in the county, Kent.
Well, it's a judge's limit for you guys, what?
I'm telling you, look. Kent, that sign sits in the county. It doesn't sit inside the village. It's just like the two detour signs at one-on-one. We told you before, that's in the state of Indiana. We cannot take enforcement action.
It got moved to very close to Fort Worth Tower, that's probably been moved eighty times since. I can't help that. The people that move signs, it doesn't be any good to put signs anywhere. We went out, screwed it up again today.
Right, somehow they're, either someone's knocking them over or they're getting blown over, one of the two.
Hey, Kent, do you know when they move into Chicago Street closely? Are they gonna move their equipment out of High Street?
No.
I don't think so.
So what do they have left to do in High Street?
They're eventually have to go back down to the Catholic church. But, uh, after tomorrow, it'll all close, I don't know. They'll just have their trenches, but they don't really want people to drive in over. And that move, that's the end of the day, and the two weeks they've been gone, people get.
That seems like.
Seems like we had this suspension a month ago. Saying, so, Mark, can you get with Kent and see what he's done?
We, we have cited, we have cited him for disobeying the road closed signs. But we still got an abundance of traffic coming through. The, the report I received on Thursday from one of my guys, they were told. You got FWT traffic, it's coming out after they get off work and they're coming straight down High Street. You know, and taking a shortcut. You know? So they were gonna start watching for those and start citing for driving on a closed road. But if we do that, then we need to start citing everybody that's coming down these roads. So I think we put the local road, you know, local traffic only through there. Right? And they're coming through there and they, and they continue on through. It's much easier to cite those people than it is someone that's living on that road. 'Cause the one that's living on that road, one, two, the businesses in that area, they're not in violation. Okay. Even delivery trucks would be in violation. On just a road.
I guess once we move out, once all the equipment's in Chicago Street, that's gonna knock down ninety percent of the traffic in the areas that we're talking about. The, the biggest areas of concern as far as damage are Chicago, Spencerville, and Arthur in Spencerville, right?
Yes, yes.
So mainly Chicago and Spencerville. So when they have all their equipment and they've got trenches cut through there, that's gonna cut down ninety percent of the traffic. And then we're just dealing with people who can't read signs essentially. 'Cause the trucks will probably go around, just continue through High Street, right?
Well, the trucks will, the trucks will, uh, because High Street's gonna remain closed, so the trucks will go up and, and, uh, run down Arthur Street.
Which they can navigate somewhat better than Chicago and.
That's not near as severe of a turn as that or on Spencerville and, uh, Chicago.
Yeah, I'm gonna come out of town with it. Or you're gonna get torn up there off of what person? Anyway, if he gets local traffic only down to the Catholic church. And if they're on Chicago, I mean, you can't post it two miles off the country. Is that all he needs to do? You keep coming back from this and it never gets solved, so it's a bit frustrating.
Well, Kent, do you have connections with, with, uh, Nick Holmbrink or, or his, that, uh, Ho operator? Uh, and if you and, and Mark and somebody with Holmbrink can work something out here in the next day or two. Uh, knowing which roads are gonna be on and where they're gonna put, uh, equipment and stuff. Um, be, uh, a lot simpler than us sitting here, uh, trying to hash it out ourselves, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think Kent and I need to do that, yes.
Okay, sounds like the plan. Okay, anything else? I just forgot where we're at. I guess we're with Mark. The, um, fire chief?
I just have a couple of things. Uh, first off, I'd like to, a recommendation from the mayor. To put, uh, Mariah Salinas on the EMS department. Uh, she'll be going, there's a class starting Saturday for emergency, for first responder class. And I'd like her to get in this class right away so we can get her going.
Okay, I'll recommend this Mariah Salinas.
Salinas.
Where's she from?
She's from Hicksville. Her family owns, uh, Latita's Restaurant.
Oh, how old is she?
Eighteen. She just graduated last year. She did a ride along with us her senior year. And she's really interested and really wants to get going on it, so.
Okay, Salinas, that's the last name, pronounce it right. So I'll recommend her.
I make a motion to accept a mayor's recommendation.
Okay, second. Roll call.
Kara?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
And of course, as always, that'll be pending, uh, background and drug screen. Uh, we do have, the insurance safety office will be here tomorrow to look through our stuff to get us rated for insurance ratings. We're currently at a five. I hope we're able to stay at a five. Um, they'll be here two o'clock. Uh, that has to do with our water. Response times, uh, all that good stuff, so. We've got that going on. And I think that's about all I have right now.
Anybody got any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I got one. Scott, you mentioned a month or so ago about expanding the territory. How's that going?
Yes. Uh, I think, uh, just a little bit ago, uh, Cypriot Township wants us to, uh, cover some of their territories. Um, they've checked from there in, and they can do it from there in. Just I, I've checked with our EMS director. And, uh, the state bar marshal's office, and they don't see any issues. I don't know if there's anything legality wise from Troy's side we need to look at.
It, Scott, I gotta finish up one thing. I started looking into it. I gotta figure out, like I said, the, the big issue to, uh, that I thought of and maybe the EMS director clarified was. The issue about the state licensing potentially being different, uh, as far as like EMTs and stuff like that.
Right.
I don't think the fire, I don't think the fire issue is as important. But, uh, you know, making sure that if we're going and doing runs in EM, in Indiana. And they have a certain level of requirement for something and ours is different, we don't wanna be violating Indiana state law. Because we're doing it the way it's allowed in Ohio and it's not allowed in Indiana.
Right, I know.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to look into.
I know, uh, Ohio is a little more strict on the licensing part. Because if we send somebody in the, you're not here and take a respiratory class to, to do breathing and stuff. Um, I wasn't sure where that lied. The EMS director wasn't really sure either, and I couldn't get a clear answer. So if you can follow up on that.
Yep, I'll, yep, I got a contact that I could follow up with in the state and then I'll get back to you.
Okay, and I'll just have to figure out what we're doing for rates and stuff and how much we're actually covering. So that's where that is.
Right. Okay.
Scott, is that right, all that third truck that Holden?
Bring him there.
Good. Okay, any other questions? All right, um, Park Director, I think we've done with her. Val, you got anything else that I have?
No.
Okay. Uh. Fiscal Officer Cheryl, your report.
Um, the only thing I have today is the fund status and then that new report, the fund summary that shows the revenue expenditures. And I also have the quarterly newsletter from the ethics department. Keeping you straight. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Cheryl? Okay, um, well, my report, um, I'm gonna recommend, Julie's gonna step down here shortly, retire. Um, had a replacement for mayor's court. Uh, so I'm gonna recommend April Allen. She already works part-time for the village. Um, so add a few more hours, so instead of hiring something else just for that, my recommendation to, um, have April Allen step in that job or training. Uh, of course, six months probation. She won't need a drug test or anything. So I'm gonna recommend April.
Mayor? Mayor, I could only hear about half of what you said. Uh, Cheryl, excuse me, is, uh, Julie gonna, she's retiring and she's gonna be completely out of there?
True, yes.
No?
Sooner than late, you told me.
She's on, you can ask her.
Julie?
She, she's, right now, she's just getting out of the mayor's court side of it. She is not retiring from the police department.
Right.
Okay.
I thought, whoops. Never mind. What's that, the part of the description was to do mayor's court?
Well, we'll have to separate them.
Hmm. Okay.
Okay, I still recommend April? I, I'd recommend the mayor's recommendation. Second. I'll second that.
Mark?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Hey.
Flapper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um. Can everybody hear me okay? There's still a lot of noise in this.
Hey Troy, can you mute yourself?
Yep.
If everybody can mute themselves, I think that would help. If you got a question. That's a lot better. Thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay. Uh, the county were still at a red, which I'm kind of surprised. Uh, ten percent of Defiance County has had the first dose of the vaccine. And four point seven percent has had the second dose. Then also nine percent of Defiance County residents has been, uh, has come down with the COVID. I was kind of surprised at that number, nine percent. But we're still in the red. I would think sooner or later we're gonna you know, the hospitalizations have really dropped, so. And last but not least, I'm gonna read this letter. Um, March first, dated today. Please consider this my formal request asking to be replaced as village administrator. I will continue to do the job until a person is hired. And I am then willing to continue in whatever capacity the mayor and council wish in order to make the transition as smooth as possible. Thank you respectfully, Kent North. So I'm kind of sad to read that, but, um, we knew it was coming. So I'm gonna start advertising. So if anybody have any questions or anything else needs to be brought before this court, or court, I had court this morning, this council.
There's no real timeline for Kent then, uh, when he's gonna be gone, gone?
No, we're just gonna start the process.
I mean, drag yourself, drag it out, I mean, just. I think it's gotta take a month or two or whatever, but it always don't stop. You know, just keep moving on it.
Okay, any other questions? Anything needs to become before this council? Any questions for me?
Hey, uh, I don't have a question for you, Mayor, but whoever is on street light, uh, can we get together here? I'll look you up and drop you each, uh, an email and, and see if we can get together and, and do a meeting and, and get Kent some kind of an answer on what we want to do with roofing. Okay?
Okay.
I'm on it, Ron. Just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know too, Ron.
Who's that one?
Corey.
Corey, okay, Corey and, and Larry?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, guys, I'll get with you. Looking good for either of you two? Right off the top of your head?
I can't Wednesday.
Hi.
Back with you.
Okay, all right, I'll send you, I'll send you each a few dates and, uh, then you guys pick from them. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Flapper?
Yep.
Assett?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the next meeting will be virtual unless something drastic happens, either be in the council chambers or the fire hall. Um, tonight was pretty bad with the noise, so it's hard to discuss virtually, so. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys.